It's eleven o'clock. It's time to start our meeting. Welcome all. Just a quick reminder before we go much further though, remember to either turn it off or silence your electronic equipment. I've already double-checked mine, so it won't happen again this week. Okay, this morning, we have Cheryl Bolton will provide our prayer and Wendy Long will provide our pledge of allegiance.
Amen.
Please stand in front of me in the pledge of allegiance. I-
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Cheryl and Wendy. Appreciate it.
One thing that's not on this agenda, do we not need to appoint a chairman pro tem?
Be patient. We have a-
You don't need to be as formal, but just announce that Brad has gone in.
We have excused Brad. He's out of the area. So I will be acting chairman this week. Our first thing is the approval of minutes from December twenty-seventh, twenty-two and January ninth, twenty-twenty-three.
I would make a motion that we approve those minutes.
I'll second that. Do we have a vote?
Yeah, aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Second one is our approval of minutes from December nineteenth of twenty-twenty-two. And in that, they did the reading, the first reading, it's required that we acknowledge it in a public safety or a public meeting for CDBG.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
It's not really a public hearing. It's just, we have to have the approval for the CDBG public hearing.
Yeah, they had it back in December. I'll second. Vote?
Aye.
Aye. We have a reading of the warrants?
There is a slight correction on the agenda though. Instead of it being approval of warrant, it will just be a report of warrants. Because these have basically already been approved, either through budget or through the PO or purchasing process. So these will start to be just a report of warrants that will be presented.
So do you guys want to sign them as we have in the past thirty years? Or just-
Don't believe there's any reason to, Mr. Wilkins. Sorry to take care of-
I would advise that we, we hold to the statutes where it goes through the auditor's office. Does that review? It gets sent to the treasurer. If the funds are there, it gets paid out and then the report is made back to the commission. But that's, that's all it is. Cause they, they have the authority to pay out. Once, once all the stuff through purchasing has been done, then they are able to pull out. Just pay out.
But I'm not going to pull out anything that's, I'm not going to identify, cause to me, these are all claims, just so everybody can-
That's fine.
Alright, the-
I would really like to get past that conversation.
I want to get past that conversation.
That's what we're trying to do by this.
So where are, where are we on the implementation of the, of the software that was approved last year?
It's never been purchased.
Yeah, contract was never signed.
Why was it never purchased?
Contract was never signed. Commission never signed it. We actually found it when we took-
The Polaris?
Uh huh.
That system wouldn't do-
It was, it was bid out.
It was bid out.
It was approved. The company was notified.
All I know is that I have not seen anything do with it.
Yeah, as far as I know-
So a few months ago, we had that discussion and the talk was, we're, we're working on it. We're trying to implement it. Uh, but there's kinks that we have to get worked out. That was all in county commission meeting. And I said, okay, let's get it done. We're four months behind on the statute. So nothing's been done with that software?
No, never have received it. Nor do I think any contract ever been signed with them.
No, we actually have a contract in our office that wasn't signed.
So why was I told, uh, back in September last year that?
I think he was talking about the rewrite of the existing system we have.
That wasn't the question I asked though.
Oh, I think that's what it was interpreted.
We, we went through proper purchasing policy. It was awarded and the company was told that they got it. And they were supposed to get a ninety-five thousand dollar upfront payment. So have they not received that?
No. There's never been a check process that I'm aware of.
We're gonna have to have a massive talk afterwards.
Alright, after the meeting.
A massive talk.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Wilkins.
Okay. The January thirteenth warrants for eight hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred and eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Couple of the big ones on there I want to bring out just for the attention of the public. There was a new pickup purchase from Salt Lake Valley Chrysler, fifty-nine thousand nine eighty-two. This was to replace the sign truck that was totaled, that we got the money in in December, I believe it was. We also paid, did our transfer to Vernal Cemetery Association, four hundred nine thousand six hundred. We also did our transfer to Drug Court for ninety-four thousand.
Were those annual payments?
Those are annual payments. Those are once a year payments. The check run for January twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and one cent. Only one on that one that is a one timer, out of the ordinary was our annual UAC dues for forty-one thousand nine oh eight fifty-five. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Event funding?
Um, is this all you?
No, I'm gonna just turn the time over to them.
Okay.
Alright, since you're both new, I just thought I would start it, but um, through the event, uh, UNT County event funding application, we have the recipients of those small mini, um, sponsorships come in and report on their events as soon as possible after the event, so that you can know how their event went and how the money that UNT County used to sponsor, um, was used. And so, um, today we have two, I don't, does anyone see Eldon? I don't see Eldon with Bull Riders Challenge. He might have been busy. He thought he could make it, but he'll come in a later date, so, Steinecker.
Alright, do you need to plug in?
I do. I've got some pictures to share, so I believe, yes.
Oh, IT's here, in the house.
Oh, that's lucky. Yay, wonderful. Um, alright, so for those, um, that I don't know, my name is Amanda White. I'm the park manager for Steinacher and Red Fleet State Parks. Um, and I'm going to speak a little bit about, um, our youth ice fishing bowl that we had this weekend. Um, so on Saturday, we hosted our first annual, annual, um, youth ice fishing bowl in partnership um, with Wildlife and then UNT County Tourism. Um, UNT County Tourism sponsored five hundred dollars to cover the entrance fees. Um, and that allowed every child and their family that are participating to come in for completely free. Um, and the registration for the event was free, so pretty much everything to these kids was, was included. Um, and so we actually had about a hundred and eighty kids sign up. But that three degrees that morning, uh, kept a lot of folks at home, so we probably had about seventy, seventy-five kids or so show up that day. Um, and so this is just an overview. This is when everything was wrapping up. We were getting, um, finally had some sunshine and got some drone pictures. So, uh, this is everybody that was there gathered around getting those prizes. We had some amazing, um, business sponsorships for those prizes, Basin, Sportsmans. Man, just a ton of, of individuals and businesses came together to, to give these kids some awesome prizes. So, uh, we had three different age brackets. So being a youth event, it was seventeen and younger. Um, so we had eight and under, eight and under winners. Um, and so these kids, we had a largest fish, um, so heaviest, second, and then third. So the top three heaviest fish in each category, as well as the smallest fish for each category. Um, so these are our winners for eight and under. Um, and then, uh, so we've got three that are first, second, and third. And then the gentle, the little guy on the left-hand side is a, is a the smallest fish overall. Um, and then we have our nine to thirteen-year-old winners, so same thing. Um, top three heaviest fish and then smallest fish for that age bracket. And then we did fourteen to seventeen-year-olds, and so same thing. Uh, three biggest fish for the age category and then smallest fish for the age category. Um, mostly, I don't know how many of y'all are fisher anglers, let's say that. Um, but, uh, but trout seemed to be the best and actually in, uh, in this age category, the smallest fish was actually a fifty-seven grand bluegill. So, uh, so she did pretty good. And then we did a prize for first fish. So this kid got the very first fish in within two minutes of eight o'clock. Like he was running. Uh, we had several kids right, like within the first two to three minutes, all right up there, but this kid got his in first. So, um, I think he actually ended up getting a hundred dollar cash prize from our donations. Um, and then, uh, the biggest winner, biggest fish overall had a winner, so man, this guy came in pretty nice. He got, uh, the largest fish in his age bracket and then also the largest fish overall. Um, and so due to those, um, prize sponsorships, man, we had, um, multiple hundred dollar gift cards to Basin and Sportsmans. We had cash prizes. We had just regular gift cards. There was tons of fishing gear given out. Every kid walked away with something. Um, not every kid walked away with some awesome cash prizes, but everybody did get, um, at least some, some lures or some hooks or some weights. Um, and so literally everybody from Flaming Gorge and Manila, all the way down here, literally, it, it was a, an amazing event. Some huge sponsorships and just some great, great opportunities for these kids. Um, and so then I just threw a couple of other pictures together. There were some tough kids out there, man. We were freezing and we had multiple layers on and, um, and so these kids were troopers. They did a great job. Um, we, uh, we had families out there, so the idea was to get kids out, participate, really let the kids lead the way. Um, but I mean, we had one little guy, you can see in that top left corner, he, his dad helped him, of course, yeah, you know? But he was not happy. He was scared of the fish. Every time that thing would flop around, he would freak out. Um, and so, uh, he ended up, ended up having a good time, but it was, uh, it was quite the sight. Um, and so we started our day out at six o'clock. We wrapped up at, uh, about noon and everybody had their prizes by twelve-thirty and headed home for lunch, so. Um, I just want to say again, thank you to UNT County, uh, Travel and Tourism for their continued sponsorship and support of state parks, as well as the UNT County Commissioner's Office. You guys are just fantastic. Um, and so, uh, that is the end of our event information, but I would also like to take just a couple moment, moments to introduce um, some new staff, if you guys would just stand up real quick for me. Um, so we have, uh, Trent Curry, uh, sorry Vernal, I stole him, um, from the police department here. So he just came on January ninth as our new assistant manager. Um, and so he is, uh, ready to rock and roll. And then, uh, our other gentleman is Reese Lutz and he is going to be going to post next week, so a week from today. He will be getting started in that ranger position, living up in Dutch John, helping out with the gorge and state parks. So wanted to give, um, the opportunity for, uh, for introductions for them and then, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. I have one question.
Of course.
Are the fish more active in the morning even in the winter? Cause if not, I would suggest you move it till like one in the afternoon, when it's warmer.
We, we've definitely got some, some brainstorm, some good ideas. Um, we've thought about trying to shift it back just a little bit and, and maybe play with, uh, some flexibility depending on weather and things like that, but yeah, it, uh, definitely was colder than what we were expecting, that's for sure, so.
No, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Showing on Tournament of Champions Wrestling Tournament.
I saw Greg come in.
So I saw him out there. I was gonna wake him up here in a minute.
I forgot to bring my slideshow, but, uh, as you know, I don't have a slideshow, so, uh, I'm old still. We don't do things like that. Uh, Tournament of Champions, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the commission and, uh, tourism and Alicia helping with so many things, uh, and the tournament, this is our fifty-second year of the Tournament of Champions, twenty-eight years, we've been hosting it at the Western Park. Uh, we've actually, I hate to tell you this, we have outgrown your building. We need to add on. Uh, but, uh, uh, but we had thirty some, uh, thirty-one teams for the boys tournament. Uh, we had a fourteen teams for the girls tournament. Uh, our JV tournament, we had the same thirty teams. Uh, so I mean, we had tons and tons and people here. I think, uh, you couldn't find a hotel room here in town if you wanted to. Uh, so I mean, uh, everything went well. The tournament ran smooth. Everyone loved the tournament. I had nothing but compliments except for one or two people, but you always have that. Not everyone's always happy, so. Uh, but, uh, the running of the tournament went great. Uh, I, I, I don't know, but it's just been a fabulous event. People like to come to a tournament. Uh, we're getting bigger every year. We have more and more teams that want to come. Uh, just, we're gonna have to somehow, we can't get much bigger than we are right now because we running out of space, so.
Are you able to utilize the high school facilities though, in conjunction with Western Park, or is that too difficult?
It's too, too far to, you know, for teams, especially when you have the boys tournament, uh, you only have so many coaches. And so that they have to be close, so they can do varsity and JV at the same time. Not every staff has six, seven, like we do, you know, but most staffs are probably two or, two or three at the maximum. And, you know, you gotta cover everybody, so. And then now, so that, that's the problem is we have to keep it in one area, if we're gonna do a varsity and JV like we do in the second chance tournament and everything that we do. Um, but, uh, yeah, but, uh, facility-wise is great. I mean, obviously we love, wish we could go out a little further, have a few more mats out there. I could even, I could get closer to forty, fifty teams if I wanted, but we just can't do that because first of all, I don't think we have enough hotel rooms, see, in the community anyway, so, but, um, uh, I, I don't know what else to add. Uh, one thing we did this year, uh, we, uh, the Patriot Guard riders, we, uh, went and sold shirts, tournament championship shirts with a logo for disabled veterans of Utah. We made uh, four thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars for disabled veterans of Utah. Uh, it was a, it was a great deal and I was glad to help out with that and, uh, helping out the people that need it, so.
Right.
What, we, we use the tournament for a lot of different things, a lot of good things, so. And those are one of the good things we do. Every, every year, we do something like that.
If you don't mind, I'd like to have a little bit of personal privilege here. Um, my dad, can try not to get emotional. My dad's been wrestling since high school. And he said he's been going to these wrestles for sixty-five years and he couldn't go cause of his health. And I was very grateful that Strata streamed that because we were able to hook it into his TV and it made his night. It was awesome.
Was it semis and finals, right, that we were able, yes. And that's really neat. We have that big screen. We have, we, a lot of things we can do with that. It makes it a way cool event and, uh, of course, the finals, we have the smoke and the fire and, uh, uh, the kids run out of there, they'd never forget that the rest of their lives. They remember the day they came out of the tunnel uh, at the Tournament of Champions and of course, our plaques, our second to none with, uh, uh, Brad McClellan and what he does with us and gives it to us at cost, you know, so I mean, so many people do so many little things. It would, I would have to take an hour, an hour and a half just to bring everybody up. We don't want that.
No, but-
I would be late for class too, so.
It's great. That was just, that was just a personal experience that I wanted to thank you and Strata, Spectra, whoever it was, for doing that. That was wonderful.
Yeah, it's, it's a great event. Uh, you got me maybe for one or two more years, then I don't know what you're gonna do when I go, so. I'm the only one who knows where all the dead bodies are, so. Anything else?
No, just thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate all you do for the- Do we have anybody here for the Bull Rides Challenge?
Okay. Maybe he can report at a later date.
Yeah.
Okay, we need to discuss ordinance number zero one dash two three dash two zero two three oh one. Setting forth emergency legal requirements regarding snow removal on county roads and subdivisions.
I can, I can tee this up and then Scott's here, if you wouldn't mind giving a little bit of information on what your crews are seeing just out on this, out on the county roads. So as everybody knows, we've been having a, an above-average, um, snow year. Uh, last week when Scott and I were talking, um, we were, there were a few days where we could have received more snow. Right now, it's lucky we didn't, but we were actually going to be coming to the commission for a request to enact emergency uh, orders and, and ordinances so that we could, uh, clear our streets in a safer manner. Uh, now we have a little bit of time, luckily, uh, Scott's crew and, and facilities and I think a little bit from the from the landfill have all been helping in, in getting the snow cleared out, but we need to have just a quick discussion on how we want to get things set up, um, for the rest of our winter.
So if I could just preface this a little bit, so there's so much snow and there's no place for people to put it. They're pushing it out into the roads, causing single lane road issues and it's becoming a real safety hazard. I mean, it's, it's hard for everyone to find a place to put the snow, but the roads are definitely a safety issue right now.
Yep, yep. So we're dealing with that, we're dealing with drainage issues because there is so much snow. Where the water is supposed to be going when it does start melting, can't get there. Uh, so there's just a, there's a lot of issues, so. Um, really on today, we, we kept it on the, uh, on the agenda, just in case things got squirrely between our discussion that we had last week and then today. But, um, some of the things that we need to address are, uh, vehicles being on the side of the roads. Uh, so then we can't plow or we end up hooking, uh, the car and then it damages the equipment and we're, we're what, four to six weeks out on getting any replacement parts? So you have a whole machine that's down while we're waiting for replacement parts to come in. I know the road department has been working to rig a few things up to, to fix some, some damage to some equipment, but uh, we can't, obviously, we, we don't want to hook a vehicle for a lot of different reasons. Um, so it's, it's vehicles, it's what Scott was just talking about where they're pushing a massive amount of snow onto the right of way. Uh, we also have, our office is filled with some phone calls where neighbors have been pushing masses of ma- masses, mass amount of snow onto their neighbor's property, which we can't have happen either.
And we're able to go back in a lot of the roads and, and push the snow back, but when you have snow back to back to back, I don't have enough equipment and personnel to keep up, so it becomes a safety issue on my end.
So I don't know if the commissioners had any specific questions. Um, what I would like to propose is if, if Scott and I can work together on getting a draft ordinance put together, so they could come, uh, maybe even as early as this next Monday. Um, and then we can start getting public awareness out to, um, our residents to let them know. I, I don't, I think some people think that we just go to like a snowbank and we already got our year's worth of snow. We just got it early. That's not how mother nature works. Our, our wettest part of the year is actually, for snow, is actually February and March. And up on top of the mountains, it's not until the first week of April. So we're still looking at, uh, the weather patterns are that I think we're gonna still be in that atmospheric river, uh, those pressure systems that are moving through. And so we're looking at receiving a massive amount of snow coming, uh, when we normally get it. And, and this stuff is usually more wet. It, it causes more problems, so. Uh, that's, that's what we would like to do. Um, like I said, we're changing the agenda item just a little bit, cause we were looking at requesting some emergency orders. But I think we have a little bit of time to, to discuss some solutions.
Yes, sir. Mr. Matt?
Sorry, are you guys looking at, uh, people plowing county roads and moving snow around on their own? Cause I've seen that as a-
Yes, that's what we're mainly talking about. Um, I know there isn't ordinance for the vehicles on the road, but as far as snow, they're pushing snow. They'll push it across their driveway into the road and they can't push it far enough now, so it starts to impede on the road and it's, it's getting widespread.
Or sometimes they're just messing with the snow in the roadway itself and pushing it to certain areas. Um, I, I've just seen that around, like, they're not, they may not be pushing out of their driveway, but they're just getting in the roadway and moving the snow from the roadway around in the roadway, but making big piles so that now you only have like a enough room for one car to get, get through those areas.
Yeah, it's, it's all over. There's just nowhere to put the snow, but it can't be out on the county road.
Especially when we had, we had that storm, I'm, I'm losing the date now, cause we've had so many storms. But when it, it was like raining and sleeting and snowing and then it snowed, so there was about three plus inches of slush and then the snow on top of it. Um, I mean, like, my daughter, who has a front wheel, you know, drive sedan car, she couldn't get down the road. And we had neighbors that had plows and stuff like that and they were just trying to clear off enough of the road until Vernal City could get there. But yeah, then it got cold and all that stuff immediately turned to ice. And, I mean, it, it's just been a mess, so we're addressing it. Obviously, we're acknowledging that we have, you know, church groups, civic groups, neighbors, everybody's trying to help each other out, but there are things, especially like leaving cars on the side of the road or when they're pushing massive amounts of snow. I mean, if, if it's just me shoveling my little driveway and I get most of it to the side and then that last little part I push off onto the road, the Vernal City plow just comes in and takes it away, or they push the berm back and then I have to shovel the berm out, right? That's just normal snow removal. But this is people clearing like three-car width driveways for five hundred feet and they're pushing it all out to the other side of the road. And so you're getting big piles.
And I have even seen subdivisions now that are taking their snow and putting it on the opposite side of the road and it's starting to impede in the road, so.
I know, I was just gonna say-
I just want to have some talks and get, get the ball rolling and get, you know, the community aware, so makes our job easier.
Well, and our, our fire hydrant on my road is now sitting under about a ten-foot pile of snow.
And I discussed that with Jeremy as well.
So that's something too, that, I mean, everybody, now that we have a break of snow, I'm, I'm probably gonna be getting with my neighbors and saying, hey, can we all get together and try and get the fire hydrant exposed again?
Right.
Cause you don't want to mess with that while your house is on fire.
Well, that's what I was just gonna say, is a lot of people have been well-meaning by helping neighbors and helping friends, but what they don't realize is another issue I've seen a lot of is I'm pulling out of a driveway and I can't even see out into the road without getting into the road because of the huge piles on each side of the road. So it's impeding the vision, you know, the, a lot of things. So I think a public information thing would be great if you can get that out along with this ordinance, come up with something.
Okay, alright. Well, we'll start working on that and hopefully for the next ten days, we won't have anything too big coming in and then we'll get ready for February and March.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thanks.
Airport manager Ken Campbell has some informative, good news for us, maybe. Did I preface that right?
Good morning commissioners and good morning to the public. I'm Ken Campbell. I'm the director of the airport. And I gotta preface the whole thing with a thanks to Scott and his crew and the city folks for their crew, because I don't have half of the variables that they have about cars and tricycles left in wrong spots to move snow and it's still difficult on us. So thanks to them and their crews for doing a great job, uh, with doing what they're doing. I'm sure they don't get a lot of those phone calls that say, hey, gee, Scott, thanks. I think they get other kinds, so I'd like to go public with that. Uh, the purpose of my visit today is, uh, titled Essential Air Service, a program called EAS or Essential Air Services, uh, a program where the federal government, uh, provides some subsidization for flights into and out of Vernal. On the twelfth of December, our contract closed with, uh, SkyWest that, uh, has been our carrier in the past. Doesn't mean they're leaving. Got to be very specific about that. They're not leaving. They were also, uh, they did also bid on the next contract period. That's all good news. Further good news is, and this has not been- Uh, uh, further good news is, and this has not been um, uh, finally decided yet, but they were one of the applicants that uh, applied for the EAS system. Inside of that application, uh, they would contract for twelve flights per week, uh, and they would probably split that possibly in half, doing six to Salt Lake and six to Denver in the near future, if they win. That contract has not been awarded, but I wanted to get in front of the information, uh, because it is good news, I think, uh, for the U N A Basin access now to Salt Lake, if we, if they win that contract, it does look likely that they will, but uh, uh, access to the Salt Lake or the Wasatch Front area and access to Denver at the same time is a, a real boon for our success out at the airfield. So I wanted to get in front of that information, let you know, I will hear probably in late February, early March on the, the finalization of it and if they do indeed win, they would begin that service probably roughly in the summertime, July. So I would be glad to field any questions about that, uh, but I do wanna be very specific in speech because I see the newspaper guy writing over there. This uh, this uh, contract has not been awarded yet. This is just leaning towards solid, solid good news, uh, as far as the people that have put in for this program, looks like we're gonna win. So knock on wood and hope for the best. Questions?
Did you say if they're going to change the size of the planes?
Uh, yes, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you for the reminder. Um, currently, all the planes that come into and out of Vernal are fifty seat aircraft. And uh, SkyWest specifically, under a contract for, if, if they win this contract, they'll have a Delta piece of that that goes to Salt Lake and a United piece that goes to Denver. Uh, they will downsize not the plane, but the amount of passengers that it will hold, uh, down to thirty seats. So it'll be thirty seats two times a day, uh, instead of fifty seats two times a day. So thank you for the reminder there.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes.
All right. Next is policy four hundred, leave discussion with Tanya Craven. We'd like any input from employees or department heads on this.
Well, good morning, good afternoon, wherever we are, about eleven thirty. Let me get plugged in here. Sent a red line over this morning, but I do want to be sure that everyone is aware this is discussion item at this time, um, because there was even a, a lot of this, uh, talked about a little bit this morning. Um, so as far as the PTO that I had redlined and wanted to bring forward, there were some things going through this policy, there had been substantial changes and then just a few things that I wanted to just ask um, the commission to consider, uh, as I was going through that um, wasn't pertaining to the twenty twenty July changes. And I know the commission really hasn't had an opportunity to possibly even review those yet, maybe some just conversation that we've had in passing. Um, one of those is under number two and it's uh, discusses how the employees are uh, required to forfeit their hours at the end of the year if they're over their six hundred dollar, or their six hundred hour balance. And um, I'm requesting that they actually be paid out those hours as opposed to forfeiting those hours. They've earned those hours and it, um, so I'm requesting that the policy in that section be changed to provide that they be awarded the time that they've earned, as opposed to um, having that struck against them and that they lose that time. Or a lot of our employees are very generous and at, towards the end of the year, when we have uh, people that are needing FMLA and things of that nature, they use that time that they've earned to donate it and give it to other employees that are really needing it because they have medical needs and things of that nature, which is, is wonderful, but then they still end up losing that time that they've earned. So um, under this section in this request, I'm just uh, asking the commission to consider um, paying that out. I know that would be additional cost to the county, but again, the employee has earned that time through the years. So that would be my first request. Any questions about that? Okay. Let's see, moving down. The next one I know is probably going to, I don't know if you've looked at this, so this may be a real curveball. And this is, goes to the sick, sick leave reserve, this is uh, well before my time. And I noticed, and I've, uh, wondered when I was doing a lot of the payouts for some of our retirees. When they, was the thousand hours and it went to the six hundred hours, those employees put their time into a sick leave reserve. But when they've retired, they only received fifty percent of the actual amount that they had earned that time. And so, again, I'm requesting that the employee be awarded the value that they earned the time at. Um, again, a discussion item and I have written it in that the sick leave reserve balance will be paid to the employee upon retirement termination or change in status. Payment will be made at the employee's base rate at the time of the applicable change. The balance may be used to pay medical premium if the employee is eligible to continue on a county sponsored health plan. Elected officials at the time they were removed from office shall receive their sick leave accrual calculating using the hourly rate immediately prior to the elective service. So as it is written now, uh, they receive fifty percent, so their time that they, what was put into the sick bank, it was PTO, so it was a hundred percent. And then it went to fifty percent because of the time being taken from a thousand hours to six hundred hours. And so they're losing half of that time from that four hundred hours that they, they put into sick bank when they retire. So again, just as a discussion item for the commission to consider. And then um, finally, in July twenty twenty, um, the previous commission had requested that there be a separate vacation and sick leave that was established for new hires. Sorry, it take, will take a minute just to get down there. Um, what this did was this put value to the vacation pay at three hours and sick leave was being accrued, oh wait, there was a bereavement, sorry, before I got there, forgot about this one. Um, so we had two days of bereavement um, for employees and the three day of bereavement for employees that were affected by stillbirth, um, loss of, of a child. And then the employee also is not eligible for this until after a year. So I'm requesting that the county grant three days pay, um, there are three day uh, workdays to all employees that are full time eligible for their regular benefits, as opposed to the two and the three, just to make it across the board, three days. And that it, the employee is eligible for these regular benefits um, when hired, as opposed to waiting until that year. Because you can have an employee that's come on board with you and a month into their employment, some tragic accidents happens in their life and then there, they don't have the time. And I would hate to see that the county says, well, you're not eligible for that, right? That we're, we're supporting a family friendly environment, but yet you have to wait until you're eligible for that time. So I'd like the county to, uh, commission to consider making that, um, employees eligible for that um, sooner than a year. And then, I believe, finally, so this was the vacation and um, sick leave. So the employees were new employees that were being um, uh, accumulating three, four and six. So this is the hours that they are actually receiving monetary value after six months, um, that they're eligible. And then the sick leave is a non monetary value. They were eligible for the sick leave, which is more hours that they're accruing faster, but when they terminate from employment, this has no monetary value to them. So I am asking, and it's also been an administrative nightmare um, for our clerk auditor's office, especially I would believe for Legan to try and keep track of this. So I'm asking that the commission um, return the PTO policy. Um, make this amendment effective so that all employees could go back to these um, table that it was originally. And um, the only re- question that I had is because there was the six hours of sick leave and three hours of vacation, I wanted to really hear from, you know, maybe John on this as well. Um, I did do, write it in as a fifty hour, or fifty percent into PTO from the sick and maybe fifty percent into a sick leave reserve uh, at, immediately, just because the hours were um, unbalanced. We're getting six hours in sick leave and three hours in vacation, where the employees now that are on PTO are a flat six or seven or eight. And so how we could um, bring those over and make it a um, you know, a flat po- platform, make trans, you know, moving them over so that everyone has the same monetary value as a new employee that would have been brought in prior to July twenty twenty.
And that's part of the reason we have discussion, that's one of the things we'll have to work out. Just for where this is not something that we dreamed up in the last two days or three days, we've been working on this for quite a while. As soon as we were told that we might possibly be in here, we started looking at what benefits we can give back to our employees. As employees are our best resource and our most cherished resource. We don't feel, I have never felt that getting paid out fifty percent for your sick leave is fair. You earned it, you should get a hundred percent.
Thank you.
The disadvantage to the system being set both PTO and sick leave was not only to create unfairness, I believe, to the employees, but bookkeeping was just ridiculous. There was no reason for it, which is why we wanna put it back to PTO. We believe that every person entitled that works for the U N A County is entitled to paid time off. We are looking real hard, as she presented, that a six hundred carryover is all you can carry over at the end of the year. However, you would get paid out what you haven't used with stipulations. And those stipulations are, we don't want the go getter that's gonna go and come in on their deathbed because they know at the end of the year, they're gonna get a big check. And we're gonna put a lot more responsibility back onto our department heads. We had a wonderful department head meeting this morning, I thought. Lot of good ideas, a lot of information was presented to us that I wasn't aware of, and I don't know if you were aware of it or not, Sonia. But it was interesting to, to just see the spirit that we were starting to get from people. And it was a really nice discussion, I think we can continue on those. And don't get me wrong, we don't wanna give our employees a hundred million dollars a day to come to work. We wanna be fair in the community with wages, we wanna make sure the benefits are equal to what we have because that was one of the biggest benefits. As most of you know, I spent forty years with the sheriff's office. Benefits were what kept me here, that and the forty-three degrees below zero down in the Book Cliffs in winter time. I know, I'm not an oilfield kinda guy. But it was interesting to see with each commission, things changed. And when I retired, I paid myself quite well, to be honest with you, because Uncle Sam got the majority of my check because I had so many hours to get paid. But I felt I was compensated properly because I was paid dollar for dollar and it was more fair to me than this fifty percent off. And that's why we're looking at this and we want input. It's not a done deal, we're still tweaking with it. We don't know if we'll have it done next week, but we're gonna look at it really hard. So if we have any, excuse me, Tanya, I didn't mean to jump in front of you.
No, you're great.
Are you, you done pretty much?
I'm, yeah, I just, these are the things that I, when I went through the policy, um, I know there were a couple of things that John had brought up this morning, that we need to work into it still, but these were the things that jumped out at me that I wanted to make sure were addressed today.
Okay, so we were like, se-
Just, acting sheriff, if you don't mind, if I can just mention that one thing that was discussed this morning, then I think we have the whole, the whole picture. And that's dealing with the salaried employees
Yes.
on what kinda leave they would have. The, the suggestion from my office is that the salaried employees would have four hundred and eighty.
Yes, cause that covers the FMLA.
Unaccrued or not rolling hours, so that then when they are, um, if they have to deal with the FMLA event in their life and they process that paperwork through HR, that then tho- those hours would be paid out, just like they would be for your hourly employees where if they're on FMLA, they use their PTO and, and then they have that coverage during, during that time they're going through a, a medical emergency with either themselves or a significant other. So that was the one other change is to get the salaried employees off the normal PTO system, but still provide them that coverage if they
So we just have to write that in, that the exempt employees are not eligible for PTO, but would be covered for the, um, a um, medical event regarding under the FMLA.
They would still receive their pay during FMLA.
Yes.
Events, yeah. So that's, that was the last little bit, but everything else I think is tracking the discussions we've had.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, I think Mike has something.
Uh, part of the reason for that is we trust our employees, we trust our department heads. We're trying to cut down on the amount of paperwork. I know there's a federal thing that comes out with your taxes with Paperwork Reduction Act, which means really it's just tripled. But we wanna get it, the true statement of get down, let the people run their departments. They're the ones that have the millions and millions and millions of dollars they get to spend, you know? Like Rhodes is gonna do a thing this summer, cause they're gonna have to pay all their money for snow removal and flood fixing. So those are the things we're looking at. And so I'd like it to open up for discussion from department heads or employees. I see Mr. Wilkins is up here. Please, Mr. Wilkins.
I just wanted to address the sick bank.
Mm-hmm.
Sick bank is for employees that have been here probably twenty years plus.
Yes.
Cause we've been on PTO for probably good twenty years, until the last several years. So those that have sick bank is gonna be very, very few.
Yes.
Uh, cause there is, you don't even have sick bank anymore unless you was here as long as some old people with gray hair, you know, like me or, or.
Me.
So anyway, that's just a clarification, so the public doesn't think that there's whole bunch out there with this big sick bank, because there really are not. Without going back, I'm gonna guess there's probably less than fifty people, fifty employees still employed with the county that falls under that. As far as what you pay them, I'm good with whatever you, you decide that way. And I'm very much in support of going back to the PTO. As an administrator, it's a lot easier to deal with an employee when they call, well, are you sick or are you vacation? It's just easier to say, you've got this many hours, where have you only, I, I don't, it's not my business where you use it, how you use it.
It's been confusing.
And it's, yeah, it's less confusing.
Yeah.
And my suggestion, as if, if you do this, that any sick leave that those in the last two years or three years accrued, just throw it into PTO and be done with it.
That would be great.
So we're not trying to keep, now we have another sick bank here, we just, it's all PTO.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things we are looking at, very much so.
Those are my thoughts, commissioners.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Sam Passy, Library Department. Um, I wanna applaud the commission for looking at this, I think this is a, and HR, this is a, a needed change. I know I've had several newer hires, we went through a string of retirements and new hires and people that would, especially during the pandemic, you know, get sick within a couple of weeks of hire and then they weren't eligible to take any time off, paid. They'd been here six, six months, which is problematic.
Mm-hmm.
And then just the week by week, um, I can't use my sick time unless I have a doctor's note and I have to use two days PTO for, there's a whole convoluted process and just getting rid of that will reduce agony and everyone's accounting functions in their departments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Anyone else? So here we go. Sheriff Labor?
Sheriff Labor, I agree with changing the policy as well. I've got several new employees that have accrued um, their time, they have a pile of sick time, but no, no time off, no vacation time, so. You know, to be honest with that, they, they don't have any vacation time. They have sick time that they can't ju- use to have a weekend off or a day off, so it just makes sense to put it all in PTO, so. So it just makes sense to put it all in PTO. So, you know, it doesn't put somebody in a bad position with, with their time off and, and potentially lying about why they took Friday off or whatever.
Appreciate that, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Anyone else?
Well, I think we should just do it.
Guess who has the very next spot? Policy six ten grievance and appeal discussion again.
Okay, darn it. Okay, oh, let's see. All right, so this is one that John and I have just truly been discussing. I'm going to grab my file on this because we have talked about bringing an ALJ into the process sooner when it comes to harm termination, things of that nature.
What's an ALJ?
Oh, sorry, an administrative law judge.
Thank you.
But as far as the policy is concerned, I want, I haven't had an opportunity, John and I haven't had an opportunity to sit down and go through the policy. I've made my notes as far as that on my written, but I didn't want to jump ahead and redline.
Can I ask you one thing, please?
Yes.
Would you clarify if it's John Larson or John Sturmer when you're talking?
Sorry, so John Sturmer and I have been talking back and forth regarding.
It's a good comment. It's from John Larson.
John Larson has told me a lot about the administrative law judge. Okay, so in this policy, my first thought was in section two B. And I don't know if, John, you would agree sooner that, oh, it's not going. Just set it down there. It discusses where the, a career service board, it's not moving, would be, would come into play. And my thought was that that would be where we would want to insert the first section for a administrative law judge. Because it says that results in actual harm or condition of employment of an employee or the employee is qualified to use this grievance procedure. The HR director shall forward the grievance to the career service council, who shall resolve, resolve the question or dispute. And we had talked about harm, but I didn't know if your thought was at that, that point, the ALJ or if you were still comfortable with the career service board being a part of the process at that point.
The three that I would really like to see an ALJ go to is termination, demotion, or reduction in pay. Other types, because you can grieve about a lot of different stuff, right? There's, there's a lot of topics that you can actually file a grievance on. But it's, those are, when you have a termination or a demotion or reduction in pay, those are then tying into the Supreme Court decision that says that the employee has a property, a vested property right in those three things. So my advice is to have those three go to automatically to an ALJ. I'll skipping down in the policy. When you are, right now in our policy, if a, if an employee is terminated, either side can just elect to have an ALJ. I think the last two or three employment matters that we've had where there was a termination, the employee has elected for an ALJ. So this would just be making it mandatory that we have an ALJ. I think that's the way employees are going now anyway with employee, employment terminations.
Right.
So this is just saying we're, we're going that route. And we already have an ALJ that we've contracted with. We would just need to contact him and say if we make this change in our policy where it's, it mandate, it will just mandatorily go to you, are you okay if we revise your, the terms of your engagement on hearing, hearing those types? Because it, it may increase his workload just a little bit.
So in five D, it says that it's for dismissal. Both HR director review and commission shall be available. Instead, the effective employee shall submit the grievance directly to the HR director for review by career service council. So to me, in that section would be the first place that we would introduce the ALJ for review. Is that your, or do you want to just write in?
In, in my mind, once the final decision is, is made from under the departments, they can appeal up to the commission. If we want to leave that in, in the offices, there's, the elected official makes that final determination, right? So at that point, instead of then going to the career service board, it would then go to an ALJ. If the commission still wants to be available to hear an appeal from a department head, that's, that can happen. I would suggest that it not happen because county commissioners, just in the fifteen years I've done this, you're, you're not trained up on HR law. You're not trained up on everything you can and can't say in, in appeals and what you can and can't consider when an appeal is coming. I would, I would rather just, we, we work with the, however many levels you want to go up in the, in the county is fine. You can make that determination. But I would rather just, if a department head has the ability to terminate somebody, then they also have the ability to then just appeal that to an ALJ. That would be, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
So this is definitely something we will be looking at?
Yeah. Now remember, for disciplinary actions on department heads, that's, that rests solely on the commission. So you'll still hear those, but then your decision wouldn't go to the career service review board. Your decision would go to an ALJ.
Okay. All right, so we'll write that in and then bring it back.
If, yeah, I mean, this is open for discussion right now. If there's any other things we, we need to consider, let us know. Otherwise, we'll, we'll get a, a clean red line ready and get it presented in a future meeting.
Do you have any employees or department heads like to interject here?
Commission, do you have any questions regarding? Okay, wonderful. All right, that's all I have then. Until later. Down the line.
Thank you. Business licenses.
Matt, you're up. Business licenses.
All right, Matt Kazir, Community Development Department. Got three business licenses here today. And let's see, they're all, they're all home-based businesses. Do you want to do them one at a time or would you prefer to go through them all at the same time?
I'm okay with hearing them all at the same time and then if we need to, we can separate them.
I believe there's no changes. We'll just do all at once.
Okay. Okay, so our first one is Jiggin Biggins. Owner is Braden Dalton. The address is thirteen twenty-four east, four thousand south, here in the vernal area. And the parcel serial number is six thirty-six and ten. This is a fishing club business. So he's wanting to start a fishing club. They're going to be having different events and tournaments around. And he'll be using the home as a home office. He's in the A-one zone. We were able to go by the home to make sure that it looks like a home and not a business. And it does, it looks like just a regular house. The only thing that we have on this one is that he needs to follow all home-based business rules and regulations and that he needs to add house numbers to his home for emergency response purposes.
Can I ask you something real quick?
Yeah.
Was that Jiggins, plural, Jiggins, Biggins?
Just Jiggin, G, J I G G I N, and then Biggins, B I G G I N S.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, the next one is J M T Consulting. I'm going to mess up this last name, but it's James Moimoi, M O I M O I. How to spell it? The address is twelve twenty west, sorry, it's fifteen twenty-nine south, twelve twenty west. Property serial number five, one oh three fifty-nine. And again, that's in the vernal area. He does oilfield consulting. It's all done out in the, out in the field. Again, he just uses his home as an office. We were able, the zone is R-one residential. He is renting the property and we do have a signature from the owner of the property saying that he can have a home office there at the location. There were no issues when we went by the property. And so we would recommend approval of this one with the conditions that they follow all home-based business rules and regulations. Okay, the next one is BT Chief Trucking. The owner is Beau Horrocks. And it's located at ninety-two sixty east, six thousand north over in, in the La Pointe area. Property serial number thirteen twenty-four six. It is located in the A-three zone. And he has a trucking company that he operates. He has one truck. And he's wanting to use the home as a home office and then to park one commercial truck and trailer at the property. So the conditions with this, well, he has submitted a conditional use permit to park the truck and trailer at the property. The public comment period ends today for that, and so it'll be processed after, sometime after today on that. So the conditions that we would recommend are that they, he follow all home-based business rules and regulations. That he can't park the truck there until the CUP has been approved. And then that he follow all conditions of the truck parking conditional use permit.
And that was BT Chief?
Yes.
Trucking, okay.
Those are all that I have.
Any questions? Do you have a motion?
I would have a motion that we approve Jiggin Biggins and J M T Consulting and BT Chief Trucking business licenses as stipulated by Matt Kazir.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Matt. You have the next one, ordinance number zero one dash two three dash two zero two three oh two, amending the business licenses and regulations. County code title five, chapter four.
Yeah, so and maybe John Sturmer and I can tag team on this a little bit. So the commission had requested that we look through the business license section and, and see if it's possible to, instead of approving business licenses here, commission meeting that they be approved through the community development office with consultation with health department, sheriff's office, fire marshal, and the building division. So, which they're going through all those departments and divisions already, and then they're coming here to be approved. So I, I went through this and suggested some changes to it. Some of the changes are just some cleanup. And then other changes would affect the, how they're approved. Once they're approved, they would still go through the same process. They'd be taken down to the clerk auditor's office. They would issue the license. And then Mike Wilkins has been the one that has been signing the licenses. So that would stay the same as far as that goes. And then as far as when they renew their license, it'll still be through the clerk auditor's office if they do that. Okay, so the first change is just a cleanup in the department name, Community Development, instead of the planning and zoning office, which hasn't been that for, I don't know, twelve, twelve years now or something, so. The next change here is that a new application must be made for business license that is bought, sold, or transferred in any manner and shall be referred to the Community Development Department for approval. So we take out the Board of County Commissioners and insert Community Development Department. Next section here is five point oh four point zero six zero. And again, it's just cleanup from planning and zoning to Community Development Department and then from office to department. Since office is general reserved for elected officials, office and the others are departments. Sorry, you jumped down on me there. Okay, so the next change is in zero seven zero, and these are all five point oh four. And so this is down here in F. It states such other facts and information as may be required by ordinance, the statutes of the state of Utah and the Community Development Department. Since the commission wouldn't be involved in the process, we would need to take that out and again, refer back to the Community Development Department. The next one is zero nine zero. And this is where it talks about the application being referred to other, either offices or departments or even agencies that aren't even necessarily part of the county government, but. So again, under, under B, here we'd be taking out commission and inserting licensing officer. It would be the person in the Community Development Department that would be responsible for business licensing.
Instead of putting the community development in there, you just wanted it to be the licensing officer? And who is that?
Yeah, so current, well, it was the, it's, it's been moved around over the years. It was most recent, well, currently it's myself, but most recently it's been the, the planner that's been doing it. We have had, though, some of the administrative assistants in the past have done it. Or we had a code enforcement officer for several years and, and they were doing business licensing. So that, like I said, that can, that can change depending on workloads and different things like that.
I just didn't know if it would work to just leave it as the Community Development Department.
Yeah, could do that as well.
Of specifically a licensing officer, if that would work.
Yeah, so we could change those.
On that, then, I, I would suggest that you just have it be as the, your official title is Community Development Director. Or designee. Just have it listed that way because we are talking about a specific.
Person in this one.
Person within the Community Development Department.
Okay. That would be fine.
Okay. And again, it's just changing the commission to, I guess it would be Community Development Director or designee in that case. And then under C here, we're taking out section B because section B, the Community Development Department was already approving certain business licenses, Division One business licenses and temporary business licenses. So where we're changing, we would be changing it all to the Community Development Department. C can come out. Wouldn't be needed any longer. And then D again, just, and we'll change out licensing officer for Community Development Director or designee. And then we'll, we'll take out Division One and temporary uses. And this is the part that talks about who's approving it and then where it goes. It's still going down. It's going to be referred to the clerk auditor who will issue the license.
I think down further in there, it looks like you've got if the commission approves the business license, so we wouldn't be involved in that part, would we?
Oh, yes, I did. I missed that little section right there.
Yeah, and above that even, that the application shall be referred to the county commission. Yeah, I think you could end it at application, put a period.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, if, if they're in the case that. Well, if, if they're, in the case that it, the officer denies a business license application, then would it still come to us?
Yeah, at that point, so administratively, the idea is that it can be handled through Community Development and then processed and signed by the, by the clerk auditor. If there's a denial of business license, that's what this paragraph is.
It's down the next one here.
Then it would be appealed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's, that's true, it needs to stay in there.
Yeah, so it does talk about, up here under D that if, so for some reason the business license get denied, gets denied, it'll automatically come to the county commission for review. Make sure that everything is being, the process is being followed properly and, and that it's appropriate to deny it. The whole, the whole goal here is to issue the business license. You know, get it issued, but make sure that they're following the rules. So I, actually, those parts would stay the commission in this case because it, it's talking about a denial. And then the next section, point 100 here. The only change here is that if the commission denies the application, then it's going to go to our appeal section, which is that, that has been changed to Chapter 17.13, so I'm just updating, again, it's a cleanup from changes that have been made in the past to the zoning code. But then it kicks into that appeal process, which is a hearing officer that the county has that would hear the, any kind of appeal from the commission decision. Okay, the next section is just dealing with what's on the license itself that's issued. And so it, it's talking about the signature of the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, which would now be the clerk auditor or deputy that would sign the actual license. So I did talk with Donna Lee last week on, on that, just to see what was on the license and how it was currently being processed and signed, just to make sure that everything follows what's currently been happening.
Need to change though?
What's that?
Need to change F a little bit, clean it up a little bit. Seeing if the clerk auditor or deputy. Am I, did I miss something? Go back up to the top again, please.
Just up to the top of that?
Yeah, sorry. So it's just saying what it, that the certificate or license will contain the following. I didn't really understand that last part of it, that talking about when the license certificate was first issued, so. Okay, the next section here again is taking out UNA County Building Planning and Zoning Code Enforcement, and again, we'll just, we'll change this to Community Development Director or Designee. There. And then revocation, notice and hearing. So again, we're, we take out the commission and just put the granting authority, so whoever, whoever approved the license would be the one to revoke the license as well, and then it puts in the process for the appeal. And just changes that, that's the new section for appeals in our, our zoning codes, that's where it kicks it. Again, 200 here will, again, will change to Community, Community Development Director or Designee. And then this reciprocity, there's been a couple of questions on this, so we just wanted to clarify this a little bit. Reciprocity is when, when do we recognize another business license? And when, when is a, so the opposite of that would be when is a business license required for somebody to get, which is, we talked about up at the top. So on this, we just wanted to clarify that that they have to, if they maintain, if they have or maintain a place of business within the unincorporated part of the county, then a business license is required. Which is what's required at the top. But there were a lot of people that were saying, well, I already have a business license in Vernal City. But I'm going to open another part of my business. You know, we have a sales location, but we're going to have a manufacturing location now. The sales, the sales portion's in the city, the manufacturing's going to be in the county. But we want to just use our Vernal City business license to cover our county location as well. So that doesn't, doesn't work under our current ordinance, and so this is just clarifying that if you have a second location somewhere, you've got to get a business license for that location as well. Reciprocity works when, a contractor is a good example. If a contractor has a business license somewhere in the state of Utah, they can come to UNA County, they can build a house for somebody without having to come to us and get a business license. We're going to recognize the business license they have at their office, their, their place of business that they, they generally do business from. And they're here a you know, a short period of time or a minimal period of time, and they're, they might be moving around to different locations, building a house or doing a remodel or something like that, but we're not going to require that, that type of a business to get another license. But if they come here and they want to open a storefront or an office or something like that, then yes, they would have to get a, a license. So again, that's just to clarify which was already stated upfront, but there has been some discussion on this over the past couple of months. So those, those are the changes that we'd be requesting. And if you want, if you want to prove it today with those changes, or if you want us to make those changes and bring them back next week, either way.
I would like to say it all today.
So.
Yeah. Comments?
On their resistance, clerk auditor or deputy, just put clerk auditor, because they're all sworn in. So any of them can sign that for me, I don't think it needs to specify deputy at all.
Okay.
Just will be signed by the clerk auditor, and then if one of them can sign.
Well, clerk order, John Stermer, does, is it okay to say clerk auditor or design, office designee or something like that?
I, I think it's a, that's a good point from Mike, because the deputies are different than when you have an employee in the, in the Community Development Department.
But where we're referring to clerk auditor, I'm thinking Mike, so do we need to say somehow?
We do the same thing when we're attesting to minutes or we're
So people in his office can sign?
It's just the
Okay.
Same with the agenda, like they could do deputy, same with the sheriff, they got, it's his deputy giving the ticket, it's not the sheriff physically there, but so that'd be the only thing I would think on that particular.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so is that a period after clerk auditor then, on that, on F here? Okay.
If nothing else, I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number 01-23-202302. Amending the business licenses and regulations, County Code Title V, Chapter 4, with the corrections as noted. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so just one thing on that, so this will take effect in 15 days, so between now and then, there's, there'll still be some business licenses that may come to the county commission.
There's, yeah, there's, there's two, there's two commission meetings between now and then, so after February 7th, that's when this will take effect.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds great.
Well, commissioners, the library has received a grant in the amount of $10,618 from the state of Utah, the State Library Division. It's part of the Community Library Enhancement Fund, which is established by the state legislature, so I would first like to thank our legislative representatives who have supported this and would ask that they continue to support it in the future, so put in a good word, I'll, I'll get that in writing, so you guys know what, who to, what to ask for, from whom, but but this is money that we don't have to match, so we really like that. And it's money that we can use for any of these purposes or a combination of all of them, collection development, buying books and materials, technology use for the public, we've used this in years past to buy iPads and Chromebooks that they use in, in the library and the code clubs and things. Community engagement, retrofitting library building for ADA compliance, that's not an issue for us. And minor capital projects, which is actually maybe timely for us. This big snowstorm has revealed an issue with the sunscreens outside the library. They collect snow and ice, and so we're working with facilities on a plan to mitigate it, and because that's not something we had originally budgeted to address, this grant may be, we may end up using that. They asked us to indicate what, what area we'll use the grant for. I propose that we'll mark all five, just to leave our options open. And one thing that came to light with this is, in the last couple of years, they've removed the signature block for the, the county commission and, and left the library director and fiscal officer. Fiscal officer, of course, is Mr. Wilkins. And I've also become aware that we're one of the only county or municipal governments that get these, that bring these for approval in their public meetings, so that's something that council can advise us on down the road, but I like to come and get the news out, just, I think it's exciting to, we're doing good things, we've got some grant money coming in, and appreciate the state of Utah and the legislature for setting aside this money for libraries, and ask for approval of the grant and authorization of signatures as required.
All right, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but I do tend to agree with him, when it's a grant coming to the community, I don't know of any reason we would deny that. It's kind of a given that we would want that grant into our community and into our county, so that's something that I guess I know if we have to sign it, we would have to give some kind of approval to that, or do you have to even do that as far as a grant is concerned?
There are dozens of different variations of, of grants that, that come in, some require matching, some require a dollar amount, actual dollar contribution from the county. I think on this we, we do, we used to also have grant applications come to the county, and before we get approval to even apply for a grant. We got, that, that part's been worked out over the years, and that does, and I, I think I'd still like to see these come to the county commission. Especially if it's dealing with any in-kind contributions and stuff like that, because that is obligating. We're not just receiving money, we're actually obligating ourselves to then
I wonder if we could
Use resources or money in connection with it.
I agree with those points, I'm just wondering if it's something where we're just receiving money and there's no, you know, in-kind or anything of that nature. If those could just be approved and go through.
We could, we could start reviewing those, let us just take a look at it as we, as each grant comes in and see if there's a way that we could streamline it.
Okay.
Because I, yeah, I'm all for, especially since we're at 1223 right now. I'm all for reducing the amount of time we have to sit in the meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Cover ourselves, do I have a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion that we accept the library cleft, library cleft grant for $10,618, is that right?
You got it, I don't know how they came up with that, but they have a formula somewhere.
Okay.
I'll second.
Aye. On the vote?
As well vote. Aye.
Thank you, and, and just for Ty's note, this is electronic signatures, so it'll email Mike and then it should come to you, let me know if you don't see it.
And I really appreciate all of you getting these grants to help our community, I think it's amazing. We do have a, I think, a very good grant writer for the county now, so I would suggest that maybe familiarize her with those grants, so she can do a lot of the work for you and free you up with more time if possible.
She does the heavy lifting, maybe the fun part.
Oh, okay, good, as long as she's working with you, that's great.
All right, next is the rezoning for Stephen Stumbers.
Yeah, so it's two separate properties here. They both have the same address of 294 South, 3130 West. Serial number 4123171, they would like to go to, from RA1 to R1. And serial number 4123170, they would like to go from RA1 to R2. Just to kind of show you here on the they're located right here, is this going to work, so it's that parcel there, and this parcel here. What's happened is the, the properties have been owned by the same owner for a long time, and they're currently owned by the same owner. There's a house, if we zoom in here on the, let, zoom really quickly. If we zoom in here, you can see there's a, a house on the property, on the north property, that is either close to, at the line, or just across the line. And then there's a detached garage that's fully contained on that south parcel. So the current owner, they, they purchased the home and the, and the shop on two different parcels, it was already done when they purchased it. What they're wanting to do is they, they're wanting to do an addition onto the garage of a single-family residence. But in order to do that, they've got to be able to have each one on its own parcel and meet the setbacks and things like that, so the way to accomplish that is through a rezone of the property. Now, they could keep, they could keep the north property here at RA1, because it's going to be getting larger. But they wanted to keep the south property as large as they could, and so R1 will allow them to have a little bit lesser setback on that south part of the house, so that's why they're requesting R1 on this property, and then R2 on this property, because the frontage is going to be smaller than 80 feet, which is what's required in the R1 zone. And, and so they're going to be somewhere between 70 and 80 feet for the frontage. They don't know exactly, because they don't know exactly where that line is until a survey's done. But they will be more than 70, which is what's required in the R2 zone. Scrolling down here, just to kind of show you. I guess quickly I'm getting to this, so the county commission is a land use authority for rezones after a recommendation from the planning commission, so planning commission has heard this and they have rec, made a recommendation, which I'll get to here. This is the current zoning of the property, the yellow represents RA1 and the, this blue color represents R1, so you can see that some of the properties in the Cottonwood Heights subdivision are already zoned R1. And in fact, most of the lots within Cottonwood Heights subdivision don't meet the requirements of the current RA1 zoning, but they meet the requirements of the R1 zoning, so. It's an older subdivision, and so you'll have things like that that come up. Just to kind of show, the, the closest R2 zone is approximately 3,700 feet away, kind of to the north and east. Near the area of Main Street and 500 South. Okay. Future land use, the general plan and the future land use map that's part of that plan. You can see this area, so moderate density residential in our general plan is would be the closest thing to our R1 zone, and so you can see that this, this area I don't know, this kind of light orange color is the moderate density residential. So our, our general plan does support this going to an R1 zoning district, which is approximately five units per acre, most of the lots in here are between five units per acre and four units per acre density-wise. The medium density residential, which is similar to our R2 zone, there are some areas that are there are some areas that are shown on the future land use map to go to that. This is one of the areas right here, along Fifth South and 2,500 West. But then it also says that this designation, and this is straight out of our land use, our general plan, says this designation is intended to be dispersed throughout the county in more areas than are specified on the future land use map where necessary infrastructure and utilities exist. The idea at the time was that they didn't want to have large areas that are zoned for higher density. They would rather kind of disperse that throughout the county. There might be some areas that would be appropriate to have high density, kind of all in one large group. But the idea at the time was that that, that there's a lot of issues that come along with having high density all close together. And so that's, that's why that was put in there. Sorry, quickly here, this is a picture, just a few pictures. This is a picture of the home, which is mostly on the north lot. And then here's a picture of the detached garage that's fully contained on that south lot. Now, just to be clear on what, what changes, you know, what, what they could do with the, with these two different zonings, because of the size of the lots, they can only do a single family home on the, on the parcels. So even though R2 allows up to a fourplex, the lot's not large enough for a duplex or a fourplex under that zone. You'd have to have, sorry, let me just get to my note here really quick on that. In the R2 zone, you'd have to have 12,000 square feet for duplex and four, 18,000 square feet for a fourplex. So while the zoning would be changing, it's only because of the frontage requirements and the setback for that north lot that it would change. The properties would be developed as single family residences and that's all they could be under our current zoning. And so you, you're not going to see anything different there than what you see in that subdivision already, even with the change in zoning. So the rezone is in accordance with our general plan. And based on our analysis, the rezone will not adversely affect the public health, safety or welfare of, of the community, which are guidelines in our, in our ordinance. So planning commission, they did hold a public hearing. There were actually no comments received at the public hearing. I did receive an email that came in at like 5:30 the day of the meeting, which I didn't get till the next day. That was against it, but it was talking about commercial zoning and they shouldn't be allowed to use it for commercial purposes, which this won't, this will be strictly single family. And they would have the same rights as any other single family resident in the community. And so after, after the public hearing, the planning commission did recommend approval of this rezone to the county commission and it was a unanimous vote. That's all I've got.
Do we have a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the rezone for Stephen Summers on two properties owned by Beck Seven, Beck Seven, Beck Seven LLC at 294 South, 3130 West in Vernal and serial number, that is serial number 041230171 from RA1 to R1 and serial number 041230170, changing it from RA1 to R2.
I'll second that. Do we have a vote?
Aye.
Aye. It's passed. The next one is yours, sir.
Uh, yes. Okay, let me get to this. Okay, so one of these ordinances is from last year. Let's see, let me get which one we've got here. So this is, so this first one here, this one, ordinance number one dash 23, that dash 202303. This was a recommendation from planning commission, from this past planning commission, which was last Wednesday. And this is looking at twin home frontages in the R2 and R3 zones. So it's dealing with our area and setback requirements table. It's a pretty simple change and it came about because of some confusion that there was in these, uh, sorry, let me get, I kind of skipped over where we're at in the code. So this is in 17.32.010 setback and area, area and setback requirements table. And the change is actually pretty simple. And it's just to clarify, number one, what attached means here in R1 and R2 and R3. And we'll get to that, it's down in the next section. And then also to add attached into R2. And if I scroll down here, just a little bit more into R3 as well. So what the confusion was, was that we have these different requirements and this is the frontage requirement section. And so we had, when there's one home on the property, 70 feet. If there's two or more, it's 120 feet. But we didn't clarify attached. So an attached, attached unit is a twin home in our case. So when you have two homes that are connected together and the property line basically runs down right through the middle of the two homes where they connect. A recent applicant thought that the two or more meant that if you had, well, they thought that if you had a, a group of homes, so two or more single family homes that you only needed 120 feet for however many you wanted to put in there. So they could go and put, I mean, it would be unreasonable, but you could go put 10 homes with, that have 20 feet of frontage or whatever it comes out to. And so to clarify, uh, they did come to planning commission for clarification on what it meant. And planning commission said, no, if you're talking single family, that's one unit. And so it's 70 feet per unit. It's of single family. The two or more is in reference to two or more units that are owned by the same individual. So they would be like an apartment or duplex, three pecs, fourplex, where all of those units are owned by the same person and are rented out. And so they wanted to go in and add this language that if you're going to have an attached unit, which is just a twin home, you can have a 45 foot frontage for each lot. So between the two, you're going to end up with 90 feet of frontage. And then for, and that's in the R2 zone and in the R3 zone, it would be 40 feet. Then you can see we added this little subscript 10. And that refers to the next section down here, 17.32.02010. And just, it says attached means twin home. So that people don't get confused that you could build four townhomes that are all grouped together and they would each have to have 70 feet of frontage. Townhomes would actually fall under our PUD ordinance. So there's a way for them to develop, develop those kinds of things, but it's not through this frontage. You wouldn't want to have 45 feet of frontage for a townhome anyways, because they're usually not 45 feet wide. So, uh, tho- those are the changes that planning commission has recommended to the county commission. And again, there was a public hearing on this. There was one member of the public that got up and spoke. And they liked the changes and would like to see it happen. And it was the same individual that started the process here to get it changed. So there was better clarity and have a reasonable number when you're talking twin homes. These two zones are Moses dense zones, as, as far as residential development goes. And so they were happy with the numbers that were come to.
Any questions?
Nope.
Have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 01-23-2023. Is that an O or a zero?
O.
O three.
As an ordinance, yeah.
Okay, O three, thank you. Setback and area requirements table, chapter 17.32 amendments.
I'll second it. Over vote.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Once more, sir.
Yep. Okay, so this is ordinance number one dash 23 dash 202304. And this is dealing with other lot line adjustments. So it's dealing with section 16 point 13 point 040. This was approved or recommended by the planning commission at the end of last year. And it was brought to our attention by the county surveyor. The state legislature seems like every, every year or every other year has something to say or has done something with these lot line adjustments. And so we're just trying to get into compliance with state regulations with this. And so all, all that we'd be adding here, so this is other lot line adjustments. So lot line adjustments that aren't part of a subdivision, where neither of the parcels are part of a subdivision. And so this is just saying that an application for lot line adjustments shall be submitted when any of the lots being adjusted are part of a subdivision. And then this is what's added, or any of the parcels contain a dwelling unit. And then petitions to adjust a lot or parcel lines between adjoining properties. The reason to add parcels in there is the state, uh, the state has a specific definition for lot, which is a subdivided lot and a parcel is a non-subdivided lot. So you, you may have a parcel that has a home on it that would require a lot line adjustment. So the reason that we'd like to see this change, we're, we're trying to help protect people from their selves in a sense. The state law says that you could do a lot line adjustment if neither of the lots are part of a subdivision, but they have to follow all the zoning requirements. So on occasion you'll have somebody that will go adjust their lot line, but it, it'll be too close to the home for the setback for the zone that they're in. And then they got to go back and try and get it fixed. So instead of doing that, the process is really easy. It does require a survey though, so that we know exactly where the line is in relation to the home. There's an application that they fill out. It's a one-page application. They fill it out and sign it and it's a $50 application fee and then a $20 surveyor fee for him to file that record of survey, as a record of survey under his records. And those generally get approved within one or two days of being submitted to our office. They're an administrative approval that comes through, that's approved in our office. So there's no meetings or anything to go to. And that'll just ensure that somebody's not getting themselves in trouble to where they're not able to get a, a business license or something because their property doesn't comply with the, the current zoning rules. So the, again, the planning commission recommended that this be approved and it was a unanimous vote. And there were no public comments that were given at the public hearing.
Questions?
Nope.
Motion?
Um, I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number 01-23-202304. Other lot line adjustments, section 16 point 13 point 040 amendments as presented.
I'll second. Vote?
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your patience, Sheriff. You're on.
Sheriff Labor, I promise I won't take as much time as Matt did. Okay, this first item is the Forest Service contract for patrol. Since they are the Forest Service and they are the federal government, we have two contracts instead of one. I guess they got a lot of trees. The first one is for 2,000 and the second one's for 7,000. I have no idea why they did that, but we have a new guy that is over contracts for us. So this will require appropriate signatures. They wanted mine and the chair, commission chair signature. This contract runs from September to September. And the idea in the contract is we'll get the same amount through 2025.
And this is for patrolling on the mountain?
Yes.
Okay, sir.
So it's 9,000 per year?
Yes.
And it's a contract to 2025, the end to September of 2025?
Well, this, these two current contracts will end September of '23. But in the contract, it says it will go through '25 and we should get another contract next September with the same item. I hope they put it on the same sheet of paper. I think what the, I think the misunderstanding was they gave us an equipment line for the last four years and they realized they'd made the mistake and not give us the whole 9,000. So they just did it in two, two contracts instead of one, is what I think happened.
You had a chance to look at it. Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
Yep, I would make a motion we approve the Forest Service contract addendum for $2,000. There are two separate agreements, one for $2,000 and one for $7,000.
Correct.
Running from September to September. This one would run through September of 2023 with the understanding it would, maybe amounts may change, but it would run through 2025?
Yeah, it should renew again in October 1 and we should get another amount.
I'll second. Vote?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, the second item is an MOU with the Department of Public Safety. We've, well, a little backstory, we've been working with the psychology department and Derek Tolson with Utah State University. They've come out and given my staff some training for mental health the last couple of years. So this will be in addition to what Tanya's done with HR and REAP. But the last legislative session, House Bill 23, they allotted some funds for first responder mental health services. And that includes the entire family in, in that, not just the deputy. So anyway, this, this MOU says that DPS will give us a check for $62,455 to be used for mental health for the deputies. It'll be just a normal well-visit type situation or if they're struggling or a family member is struggling. So we would get that for one year. USU and Derek helped me write the grant and they had written it for multiple years. And you'll see in the contract that USU has presented, this covers the, this amount covers the first year of that contract.
Any questions?
I do, well, I guess so, again, this is one of those things where they wrote it to cover multiple years. Did they say an end date or anything? But it's approved yearly with, if we get the grant?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the funding through the legislature will be for one year for this, for this term. If they, if they put it again this legislative session, we could possibly continue the contract with USU for multiple years.
Okay.
The, the contract is just their services, what they'll provide. They'll bring somebody out, they'll do Zoom meetings, they'll come and give in-house training, so.
So if that goes well, then, and they approve it in the legislature, we'd be looking at a new contract in a year?
Yeah. And, and this has been offered to all law enforcement agencies in the state. I'm hearing that not many are applying. And so I wish we could have gotten the multiple year funded, but maybe we will in the future. I don't know.
Okay, sounds great.
Any further questions?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion we approve the mental health grant and USU memorandum of understanding for
It's actually the MOU for DPS and then the contract with USU.
Oh, okay, so we have to approve it, can we do that in one motion? Yes, okay. Then I would approve the USU memorandum of understanding. Then I would approve the USU memorandum of understanding for the services and the con, and the grant from DPS for the mental health.
That'll work.
Okay.
I'll second.
Oh, I was gonna give the amount. Sixty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-five?
Yep.
For this year? Okay, and it's for one year?
I'll second that. Vote?
Aye.
Aye. Approves, thank you Sheriff. Ms. Craven?
We don't have to, it does it automatically.
Well, hello again.
Yes, we should have lumped yours together, but, okay.
There it is. All right. Okay, so HR platform. Just a little history. I have been working to try and upgrade the county HR system for multiple years now. The RFPs that have gone out for the, well, the past two have included a HR module. The first RFP that went out was specific for HR. And then from that, it grew into a HR financial full for county-wide program. The program that was selected for the county Polores, or Polaris, however you wanna pronounce it, did not have an HR module, it had a payroll module. And so at that time, I was instructed by commission to go and seek out something that would take care of the needs of HR because the Canopy program that we've been utilizing for the past four or five years is subpar. It is, it doesn't provide good service to our community. When people are trying to apply for positions, it kicks them out, it takes multiple hours. It kicks us out of the system, we're constantly on with support, going into incognito mode to try and get into the system. So we just have a lot of problems with it. In that search, we came, we, we have found Bamboo HR, and it is a subscription. It doesn't require a contract. But in that subscription, month-to-month subscription, the fee could go over the twenty thousand that is in our policy, our purchasing policy. So with talking with John, we felt it would be necessary to just bring that forward, and I wanted to just bring a little bit of information about Bamboo, so everyone was familiar with the Bamboo platform. So, oh, go back. So, well, that was fine. So Bamboo HR provides a lot of services to the county. It is an HR data and reporting system. It records the employee records, custom reports, workflows and approvals. It's a self-employee service, and it has a mobile app. And by a self-employee service, what that provides is it allows the employee to be able to have service into their own record. So, but it's monitored by HR, so it has security levels as to what they can and cannot access. And so does, and then also what the HR can provide to managers, supervisors, so that they can also manage within this portal and have access when they're onboarding or when they're hiring. So they'll be able to look at candidates and contact them through this software and send out interviews, information, contact them, email back and forth with them, send out text messages through the software, and have that integration with them through Bamboo HR. So employee records and, and just customized reports so that we can drill into where our employees are, how we can better service them as far as their training and things of that nature, how we can better help them through their career path. And with the workflows and approvals, one of the things as far as workflows and approvals, 'cause it also provides the digital signatures, which you'll see later in this process. Right now, we do a lot of paper passing. We are doing some digital signatures with some of the departments with our Adobe. But what this program will do, it will be, allow us to create with our personnel forms a workflow so that when we're processing the personnel forms, we can create a workflow through this and create that personnel, personnel process in this system so that there's that digital footprint to be able to show this was created, it's here, it's here, and be able to see who has access to approve that process and who has approved it, and then who's the last person to prove it. So when it comes from HR to department head to commission, to Leanne, to wherever it is, who has that approval process. And again, those are security measures, measures that are built in within the software so that we can acknowledge who has that level of security to have access to that document. And then the mobile app experience for the employee self-service. So when they're wanting to look into their, wherever they are, to see how much PTO do I have? Do I wanna act, do I wanna request to my supervisor to take this time off? They're able to go look at it and just see, and then send that request to their department head and say, I'd like that weekend off, or, you know, two months from now, I'd like that time off. And, and be able to have that easy access and not have to try and get into an email or, or wait. They could just do it right there, you know, if they're somewhere with their friends. Oh, yeah, I'd like to be able to have that weekend off, let me just submit that and be able to have that easy access. And then our hiring and onboarding. A good example of this right now is we have an employee that is our sheriff's office. So they do a lot of recruiting from, right now, obviously, from outside of our area. We're trying to send PDFs to get signatures because they can't come in because they're from somewhere else. If we had this system, we could be digitally sending that information back and forth so that we could have all of that information, so we're getting that taken care of before they get here so that they can do that checklist, that first-day checklist with us, and then report to Sheriff instead of having to try and get them in and go through that process and then be behind and delaying their ability to start their employee when they need to. Our applicant tracking system. The applicant tracking system grabs the information, those keywords. You can put trigger words in the system off of the applicant's resume or, or application so that as we have positions come up within the county, like Matt's positions that he has available now. If we've had other applicants that have applied for other positions, it will grab those, that information and allow us to then send out recruit letters and say, hey, we have these positions available. You may, it's a good opportunity for you to be applying because those, the applicant tracking system will, will find those people that have already applied with us and automatically be sending those recruiting documents out, those recruiting letters out because it's, it's based, has those keywords in there that's capturing those people that are qualified and, and would be good to recruit to for those positions. And then they're just showing of the e-signature process. And then time off benefits, obviously, time off management. And then our benefits tracking. I asked them if they were able to do the EDI feed, 'cause right now, we currently use Employee Navigator with GBS to do our EDI feed with Cigna. They're not able to do the EDI feed, but what they can do is once, they can do our open enrollment process and then take that report, and we can send that directly to Cigna. And Cigna then can upload and update their process. So they are able to provide that to us, and then they, but they would do that. They would capture all the information from our open enrollment and get that to our provider so that our open enrollment benefit process is, is updated. Let's see. Employee experience and performance. So I talked a little bit about the performance review. Currently, our performance reviews are the paper. And we've talked about the measurable, the measurable opportunities that the, some of the department heads having a hard time finding those levels, and the employees have a hard time trying to figure out, how do I track my measurables? How do I create this evaluation? So this has a built-in evaluation system so that it, you can create that with the department head, and then it has the three-sixty evaluation process. So, and then the employee can see that in real time, you're able to have that evaluation coaching process throughout the year, so, or set your timelines. Do you wanna do it on a three-month basis, on a six-month basis, and have that performance review with your, with your staff? And then it also has surveys. Right now, we're creating our surveys with Google Docs, and, which is a good tool. But if we had it within this program, we'd be able to have those measurables within our system to be able to measure, you know, what are the things that are motivating our employees? What are some things that we could be doing differently to be able to help with our total well-being of our staff? So it is, would just be helpful to have those survey opportunities built into our system to be able to help manage the, the staff of the county. So that is just a little snapshot of Bamboo and why I'm pitching Bamboo to the county.
Are those other services that we will have, or you can...
No, those are other services that, that's just built into the program as well. Yeah.
Not, we don't have to purchase?
No, they're not purchased items, and they're built in.
And I did have another question. Does this have anything that has to interact with payroll?
No.
No, it's separate?
It's separate.
Okay.
She got two of my questions. If this doesn't work out for us, is there any subscription we have to sign up for a year?
No.
Or anything, we can drop it that month?
No, that's the reason why I was pushing forward with this, is because there is no contract. It's a month-to-month, per employee, per month. The fee is measured on your active employees. So the amount that we came up with is based on our total employee count. But once we're able to integrate over, we'll be able to look at how many active employees we have, 'cause we have what we would call sleeper inactive employees because we have a number of employees that are only, you know, employed X amount through the year, work at the snow hill. We have several employees that we have on our payroll record at Western Park that aren't active employees, but they're, they stay on our list because they maybe work during the rodeo, or they maybe work during the carnival. But those employees, we would not have, we wouldn't be paying for just because they are an employee of the county. We would only pay for them during the months where they're accruing time and being active on our roll.
Okay, if we get this program in six years from now, we're still on it, and they change the program, do we have any assurances we'll be able to go back and get the information that we've entered?
Our data is our data. I had Ryan on one of our phone calls, he was on the last call that I had with him regarding that. And he asked, where's our data stored? Where's, do we, how quickly could we get our data from them? And so he was involved in that phone call to have all of the assurances of the IT questions taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Oh, that was on the first page, sorry, let me go back.
Yes, they asked most, answered most of the questions that I had, but the cost was a next C.
Okay, let me go back. Sorry. Oh, there it is.
So it is four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and nineteen cents to do the integration. And then it will be approximately two thousand six eighty-nine forty per month. That's seven dollars and ninety-one cents per employee per month.
And what are we paying right now?
We're paying a set rate of, I think it's about six thousand dollars a year. So it is substantially more, but it is a much higher quality product than what we have now.
It's actually located in Linden, Utah?
Yes.
Interesting. At least we don't have to go overseas if we need help.
Yeah.
Okay.
Further questions?
No.
I did wanna just make sure with Mike, as far as the, the total cost, 'cause I know that was John's question too, with our purchasing policy.
Yeah, so I was...
Just for clarity, I wanna be sure we're good.
Various different routes, trying to find HR software.
Yes.
One of the reasons why I advise that we just bring it to the commission meeting, because if we go with, if we go with this proposal, the annual amount will go over the twenty thousand, which you normally have to under our purchasing policy, is go out, solicit bids, have those bids come in. We have tried that process in the, in the recent past.
Right, we've done it twice.
HR is now saying, look, we've, we've tried that, we have this possible solution. Can we give this a go? And so I said, hey, I, I think at this point, we probably can. Say, look, we've tried our purchasing policy, we're not getting the software that, that we're needing. So, but we'd wanna bring that to the county commission, just so it was...
Well, the software that we've gotten has been substantially more. We've gotten between Casell, ADP, Polaris. I could bring up the other software bids that we've gotten, and they're all between ninety thousand and a hundred thousand a year to try and maintain. So even this may appear to be substantial, you know, very expensive, but compared to the other bids that we've gotten in the last two RFPs that we've sent out, it's really very, very low bid, or not bid, but subscription.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm good. I, I think we've, I think we've exercised all due care that we can to try and follow the purchasing policy. Bids weren't coming back the way that we, either where it was providing what we needed, or they were substantially higher than what we were anticipating. And through that process, we rejected those bids that came in. Now, HR through Tanya's trying to get creative now and say, hey, we, we still need to do this.
Two years.
So I, I, I think we're good, as far as a legal footing on, now at this point, stepping away from the purchasing policy and trying this subscription route, see if it works.
And I think as long as there is, excuse me, a fiscal funding clause in it, and that anytime we can terminate it. I'm, I'm agreeing with John, we've tried for several years to find something. And as long as those clauses are in it, we're not locked into it for five years, ten years.
As far as I know, it's just a month-to-month subscription, so.
And we still own the data, we can get the data. We're probably on...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Let's give it a try.
Yeah, this is kind of an odd question, but let's say for some reason, we get close to the end of the year, we just don't have the money to fund it for a month, three months, two months. Can we not get it and then pick it up again? And what happens to that data in between, or what?
So the data can be returned to us. I would say probably the, the best bet is if we need to just...
We'd need to commit just because of the fact that we're, then we would be floating with no way to maintain HR employee files at that point. So, because right now, we are, we're currently working in a SaaS program as well. We're not working on a, the homegrown systems. We have a SaaS cloud program as is. And so we have just PDF after PDF after PDF, right? That's being housed in the cloud in Canopy. And so it's just like that. If we were to say, well, we're not going to fund Canopy anymore, HR would be like, okay, well, now we have this drive with all this information, but we have no program or a way to continue to onboard employees and function.
I mean, my, my suggestion would be, I, I think that's a valid point, Commissioner, that as we implement through the first half of this year, and then as we come into the budget discussions, which really start happening in September, right? That's when all the information starts going out, and we, and we get a good, we get a good idea of how things are going with the budget. That way, we're not waiting till November and then saying, oh, man, we don't have enough money to fund this in December.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully by September, we'll know if the system's working. If it is, the proposal will be, can we continue this?
Right.
Or it will be, no, the system's not working.
Right, let's find something else.
I think we'll know that within the first four, four months or so of implementation.
Right.
Of course, there may be more kinks to work out, but I think we'll know if it's a go-no-go in short order and then have to address it at that point.
Okay, that was one other question I got. Okay, that was one other question I got thinking was, I know right now they've quoted you seven dollars and ninety-one cents per employee.
Yes.
Is there anything, since it's a subscription month-to-month, that, that says, okay, well, once we get into this, they can't jack it up to ten dollars or fifteen dollars per employee on us? It's kind of like with insurance, we go to renew and we had a good agreement for a few years with just a slight percentage increase, but then when that's up, it seems like they make up for the.
And some of that are the pros and cons of where you, when you get into.
Any software, really.
Higher, higher-end software that we had looked at and then said, no, this is too expensive, but you also get the benefit that you know that that's the amount for multiple years based off of, you know, funding provisions, obviously.
I mean, I'm willing to get one of those more expensive softwares and.
And one thing we could do, and, because I'm, I'm learning about this software at the same time, right? I think we're gonna, and IT will be looking at it, there's going to be a lot of questions over the next few months. If we are really liking the software, we could always reach out to Bamboo and say, hey, we like this, but the month-to-month is a little concerning to us when we do our budget cycle for a whole year. Is there a way that we could get into a multi-year contract with you? Again, with fiscal funding provisions and everything else. But.
Yeah, until then.
Right now, they're offering us a subscription service and they'll probably be checking us out too. To say, right now, we'll offer it to you, but maybe we don't want to do business with you either. Tanya may just tick them off and they, they'll just shut it off and we're done.
I understand.
You'll get a, you'll get a USB drive in the mail. And here's your software.
No, I think that's a great idea, might wait to see how it works and evaluate it then. Okay, thank you.
Do you have a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the Bamboo HR subscription software. I guess originally, total due at activation, six thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-nine cents with a possible ongoing cost per month of two thousand six hundred and eighty-nine forty.
And then in that motion, can I get a finding that we've exhausted the purchasing policy? And we're going this route?
I would add to that motion that we have exhausted going through the process of purchasing policy and have not found anything that will work for the county, therefore we are, I'm making a motion to approve this.
I'll second. Vote.
Aye.
Aye. Most approved.
Thank you very much.
And I think they're just.
Mr. Turmer?
For paperwork, there's already the PO, everything's ready to go, right?
Yes, the PO was, yeah, it's ready to go, we just wanted to make it transparent for everyone, yes.
Okay.
Settlement on the opium.
Yes. Okay, so commissioners, as you're becoming aware, Commissioner Horace is already aware of the ongoing opioid litigation that's going on nationwide, dealing with the, just the horrible situation of opioid addiction across the country. We have an outside firm, or I should say firms, it's a conglomerate both locally and then nationally because the litigation is spreading all across the country. In that, there are, there are sub-cases within the massive opioid litigation where there are some distributors or some manufacturers that they are tied to the systematic problem that we have with opioids, but their involvement is smaller. Or we have reached in looking at litigation and instead of doing protracted litigation on both sides, maybe it makes more sense to just do a settlement and get it paid out. And then they're, they're done, we receive some relief and then those manufacturing companies are able to just move on. Where it, the facts aren't showing that they were substantially involved in some of the wrongdoing that, that's happened over the past couple decades with opioids. So for approval today is a settlement agreement and release with two parties. It is collectively, it's, it's UCB. It's UCB Inc. and, and I don't know how you pronounce it, U-N-I-T-H-E-R Manufacturing LLC, collectively UCB. They would pay a settlement amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the plaintiffs, the plaintiff, there are eighteen named plaintiffs in this litigation. We are one of the, one of the eighteen. The amount that would come to the county, it's a little bit of a complicated computation because it's based off not only population, but also impact to the county, which is a weighted formula. And then some of the smaller settlement agreements, we have applied that amount directly to the attorney fee provisions in the larger litigation. So whether or not we actually see actual dollars coming into the county is still being formulated through the, the math that they have to do. But we are up against, I'll just read the, we have Beaver County, Cash County, Daggett County, Duchaine, Emery, Garfield, Juab, Kane, Paiute, Rich, Sevier, Summit, Tuilla, us, Washington County, Wasatch County, Wayne County, Weber County. So you can tell where we are on the population within all those, all those counties when you just do it a population base. But it, so the approval is in the amount in that we are releasing forever these two plaintiffs. It comes by recommendation of outside counsel. And then I, I've sent an email to them to say, okay, how, how much are we going to be expecting a little bit coming to the county? Or is it going to be applied to the attorney fee provisions in the larger agreements where we're already receiving a payment every year in those, which includes the, well, I guess it excludes the attorney fees because they have their own pot nationally that they're pulling from. And so we're receiving that amount on an annual basis. If we do end up receiving X number of dollars under the settlement agreement, it will still be tied to the settlement provisions on what the money can be spent on. I can update you all administratively on that. And so it's here for approval on recommendation of outside counsel.
I have a question. Are we going to have to owe anything? Is it possible that we could owe on this?
No.
Okay.
No, this is, this is all just, that they're making a settlement to avoid litigation. We were, we're coming in basically suing on behalf of the residents of our county that have been impacted by opioids. Tri-county Health is also a named party, but any of the settlement amount money is coming to the respective counties. So Duchaine County gets a, an amount out of all these settlement agreements, we get some. Daggett County gets some as well and then.
So eighteen counties are going to be sharing four hundred and fifty thousand?
From this agreement, and this is a very small one. The, the one that was approved, geez, when was it? With Johnson and Jansen? Yeah, that was a while ago. That was a substantially larger amount that came to us each year. In the tri-county area, it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year for eighteen years. That, that's coming in. But, and there's other parties, so we, I'll just be coming periodically with different outcomes and I can update you all in closed session. This is such a small amount with players that through our discovery were associated with it, but like I said, not the main players in the opioid epidemic that was facing the, and currently facing the country. So I felt like I could just present this in open session because there really aren't a whole lot of facts that would need to be discussed in closed session.
Do we need to?
It would be a motion to approve settlement agreement and release of the Utah opioid litigation for UCB, the UCB parties, let's just have it say that.
Can I just say, I make a motion?
As stated.
As stated.
You can.
By Attorney Sturmer, yes.
Do you have a motion?
I did, that was my motion.
Oh, I'll second that. Vote.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilkins, leave your up for cemeteries.
He was longer-winded, Matt. Okay, Lapointe Cemetery, Tanna White, block one twenty-five, lot A, space six. Mazer Cemetery, Roger Powell and Deborah Powell and Wendy Keiser, K-E-Y-S-E-R, lot nine eighty-five, spaces one and two. Rock Point Cemetery, phase two, Bruce Lovell Hardman and Sherry D. Hardman, block three thirty-two, lot B, spaces eighteen and nineteen. And finally, Vernal Memorial Park, Stella Salazar, block H twenty-five, lot three, space six.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion we approve the cemetery certificates as presented.
I second. Do I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you, buddy.
Tax matters, I have two. First one is a state order of approval on Middle Fork Energy. Their value dropped six million five hundred and ninety-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This is state appeal number twenty-one dash thirteen forty-seven. Total refund being ordered by the state is eighty-one thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-two cents.
And that's for all of UNA County, that's not just UNA County?
No, that's all, that's everybody.
That's all the entities on the tax.
Right, UNA County share of that is nineteen thousand eight, five eighty-four. But we have to prove the total amount.
Right.
Right. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion we approve the, what would you call it, Middle Fork?
Middle Fork.
Settlement or what is it called?
Uh, order of approval from the state tax.
Middle Fork, order of approval from the state, Middle Fork Energy?
Energy, UNTA LLC, sorry.
Middle Fork Energy.
UNTA.
UNTA?
LLC.
LLC, thank you.
I'll second that.
Good, okay.
Motion or vote?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Commissioners, one last one here. I have a home that is potentially on my tax cell, serial number zero five one twenty-one zero zero two three. The individual has come in and filled out all the required paperwork and is requesting a one-year deferral. We'll be getting these till March fifteenth and then maybe after that. But if they apply now, we can save them a four hundred and fifty dollar fee. And this individual has applied and has given us all the required information and is requesting one more year to pay the taxes.
I make a motion we approve the tax deferral for one year on serial number zero five one two one zero zero two three.
Correct.
I second, vote?
Aye.
Aye, passes. Thank you, sir. As much as I really hate to limit any public comments, I think this has been a marathon. We better limit it to about, oh, three to four minutes. Anybody has any comments? I see no comments.
Acting Chair, if I can just make a statement on the centrally assessed tax matter that Mike Wilkins presented. Just so the public knows, if everybody's aware, our internal team of the county attorney's office, clerk otter's office, treasurer, assessor, and commissioners with outside counsel have been watching these very closely. We've been trying to mitigate that as much as we can to our local tax base. And we are also watching for the tax notices that are going to be going out this year because if anybody has used heat in their home or gasoline or any type of fuel in their vehicles, we know that the price has skyrocketed. And that was one of the main reasons the companies have sought these reductions in value. So we're going to be asking for the same thing as prices have gone up. That their taxes go up and we could then hopefully enjoy a decrease in local taxes because centrally assessed and local play this teeter-totter game. When their values go down, our tax burden goes up and vice versa. So just wanted everybody to know, we've been watching it, we know that it's been hurting. We're, we're doing our best, there's a lot of problems in state law. The cards are stacked against us pretty heavily, but we are going to be pushing that as values go up, we see their tax burden go up as well. So just wanted to state that.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion we adjourn.
I second. Vote?
Aye.
Good, aye. Thank you all for your marathon meeting.